Okay, good evening. We're gonna call the Castle Hills Regular City Council Mated Order and terminate for quorum is present. A quorum is present. We are going to start with an invocation. We have one of our residents here with us, Mr. Scott Austin from the Park Community Fellowship. Come on up, Scott.
Thank you, yes, for having me tonight. My name is Scott Austin from the Park Community Church. We're a 14-year-old church that was planted from Community Bible Church. We meet at Christian School Castle Hills. We've had a wonderful residence there for the last four years. We're excited to interact with our local security of Castle Hills Police Department, who provides security for us on Sunday morning. And our, our passion is, as a church, is to grow in passion, compassion, and wisdom. And one of those is just the compassion for our neighbors. So, our hope is that we would be a good neighbor as a church in the city of Castle Hills. My wife and I have lived in Castle Hills now for about 15 years, just right over here on Glen Tower. We love our neighborhood and we're really grateful to be here tonight. So, if you guys would, let's pray together. Heavenly Father, thank you for tonight and for the opportunity that we have to gather together in this, in this place where we make important decisions that make an influence on the lives of citizens of Castle Hills. I pray that you give this council and our mayor wisdom to make decisions. I pray that you meet us here tonight. And that in all things that we honor you, we ask these things in the name of Christ our Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Okay, next up, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief Zuniga, will you lead us? Thank you, Chief. Okay, first up, we have acknowledgements and presentations. We have the Castle Hills and the Police Department introduction of our Assistant Police Chief. Chief Zuniga?
Evening, Mayor, Councilman, residents. I wanted to take the opportunity tonight to introduce our new Assistant Chief of Police. She came on March 26th, been on a couple of weeks. In fact, she had a crash course, I guess, if you will. Her first week, I was in Galveston for the chief's conference, so she had the rein for the department for the whole week. And it was great. Tina Batocco started her career in 1983 as a dispatcher and served in that position for a little over 18 years. In 1999, she went to the Police Academy and became a police officer, serving first with the Almost Park PD, and then with the Alamo Heights PD. In 2003, she was hired by the Universal, Universal City Police Department and spent the next 21 years there serving as a patrol officer, detective, patrol sergeant, detective sergeant, and lieutenant. And yeah, she worked for Johnny. She had been a peace officer for a little over 23 years. She's also been, she's also been an adjunct instructor for ACOG's Law Enforcement Academy for over 14 years, where she's been teaching cadets and in-service police officers. Along that line, she's, it, it's to our benefit that she's still there, that she can help push for some more cadets that are coming, graduating, and bring them this way. She's a negotiator, licensed mental health officer, peer-to-peer instructor, and has her advanced instructor certificate, as well as a Master Peace Officer certificate. She's a graduate of the FBI LIDA Trilogy and Leamis LCC Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas Leadership Command College. I'd like for you all to welcome our new Assistant Chief, Tina Batocco. Do you have to say anything?
Thank you. I just want to briefly say that I'm super excited to be here, very happy to have been selected for this position, and I plan to not disappoint. I hope I make everybody happy that they made this decision. And yes, I did work for Johnny. Johnny and I actually started at Universal City. I started a week before he did, so, but I stuck it out a little longer than he did. So, I plan to stick it out here, too, for a little while. Thank you, guys, for accepting me. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Okay, next up, we have citizens to be heard. First up, we have Brother William Dooling. Your name, address, and you have three minutes, Brother Dooling.
At my own time. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Brother William Dooling. I reside at 201 Gladiola Lane. And I've asked the City Secretaries very kindly to pass some photographs to you. And then they'll wind up with the mayor, and he can do with them whatever he wants. I have really three items, and the first one has to do with the enforcement of, well, both actually items have to do with lack, apparent lack of success with code compliance enforcement. And so I think it rises higher than just making a complaint or asking. The picture of those trucks, I would just ask each council member, if you had that in your drive, in the driveway next to where you're living, I think you'd want something done about it sooner rather than later. And this has been going on for years, actually. Different trucks, different companies, different, but it's always commercial vehicles in the driveway. And that's at 100... Oh, my God. The one after Phlox, anyway. Dandelion, 100 dandelion, corner travertine and dandelion. And, you know, I just think everybody else has to comply with the vehicle regulations. And there's, there's just, at our end of the city, we feel a little neglected that these things just never seem to get resolved. Related to that, at 103 Phlox, which you may or may not have read about, that's not in the pictures. The pictures are all at 100, excuse me, dandelion. But at 103 Phlox, you've seen it on Next Door, I'm sure, the picture of the house. And if you haven't read that, I suggest you do. It was a posting concerning nefarious activities, allegedly. I currently represent, not as a lawyer, which I am, but just neighborhood people, and that's why I came over here tonight. They have about eight people that live all around that house. I live across the street. And there's allegations of who knows what, and you can read the posting on Next Door Neighbor, Next Door Online. The, the real issue here is this is a single-family residential zone district that is not a single-family living there. There are six or seven, five or seven, depending, varying folks living there. And I really don't believe more than two of them are, I'm sure there's more than two of them that are not related. And our detectives could easily determine that, but our folks over there have asked code compliance, they were told, "Oh, well, it's just too difficult. We can't do anything about it." And I would just ask that our single-family codes be enforced. They're enforced for everybody. We all have to follow them. And I see my time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brother Dooling. Okay, next up, we have, it looks like last name Davis.
Yes, thank you for hearing me.
Can you just state your name and address, sir?
My name is William Davis, and my wife Dolores behind me. We live at 119 Townview Drive. And just recently, a couple of years ago, I put up a $30,000 concrete fence, rather than that little wooden fence that always got knocked down and the dogs running through them and stuff. And since then, my backwash to the swimming pool, I had a special little hole made with the, with the PCP pipe, running through the fence into the easement that's in the back of the house. Well, I don't, I can't say who did it because I didn't see it, but somebody put a cap on that. And when I ran a backwash, it almost blew up my $20,000 pump to the swimming pool. And it's going to an easement where I've been doing it for, you know, 17 years now. And now they put a little cap, somebody put the little cap on it. And they have a swimming pool, the people next door, behind me, that is always empty. And it's just full of mosquitoes and stuff. So, I don't know if the backwash that I was using two days ago, if in fact, the water ran into their yard or something like that, because they don't have a fence up or anything from the easement to their backyard. I just don't want it to happen again. That's on, that's my only complaint. I haven't told, talked to them yet or anything, but I just discovered that today. I still got the metal in my shoes when I was trying to, you know, get it squared away, take that little cap off and stuff. That's all I have to say.
Perfect. Well, we can't respond to you right now, Mr. Davis, but the city manager took some notes, and we'll get it, we'll reach out to you and see how we can help you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for being here with us. And next, we're on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Smith? Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. And next up, we have discussion of possible action on an appeal by Antonian High School as a result of the denial of a sign permit. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, Council, this agenda item was a request for a sign permit by Antonian High School. And based on our code, the way... Sorry, Council. Sorry, I was trying to send Mr. May the link for Zoom and my Zoom open up. So, sorry about that. The process for the sign permit from Antonian High School, based on our code, it was denied based on the height of the sign on the building. And so, there was an appeal process that was followed by Antonian in this case. And so, the appeal process leads to you all as council, from a decision-making standpoint. We have representatives from Antonian who would like to speak to you about the particular sign. I know there's an existing sign on the building based on current height and size, and they're just improving upon the actual signage of the building itself. So, and Mr. Fletcher is also here, in case you have any questions as well. He's in for Mr. Schnau as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. So, at this time, I think we have some representatives from Antonian?
Hi, my name's Melissa Smedley. I'm the Facility Building Operations and Transportation Coordinator for Antonian.
And I'm Monica Ruiz Mills, the Principal of Antonian College Preparatory High School.
What we would like is to replace the sign that's up there right now with a sign of the same size and this exact same location. Our sign is 17 feet off the ground versus the 12 feet that the ordinance calls for. So, we would just like a waiver to grandfather us to put the exact same spot.
Mr. Joyce?
Just a quick question, ladies. It's just the Antonian sign with the individual letters, right? And you're just gonna replace letter for letter?
Letter for letter, except at the bottom, underneath, it will say College Preparatory. But it will be in the same dimensions. We're making the letters just a little bit smaller so that that goes in, so it's the exact same square footage.
Got it. Thank you.
And it's, just to clarify, part of the reason that we're here, I believe this is gonna be illuminated?
It will be slightly illuminated.
Okay, just to provide a little bit of color to my colleagues here.
It will not be illuminated to the street. It is less than our street sign or our street lightage that we have in the parking lot.
Perfect. Yeah, Mr. Smith?
Is this, are these the letters that are on the eve of the building itself? So, it's actually, you're not actually even able to lower it, correct?
No, right. Yeah, our architectural style from 1964, that is where the top of our building starts.
Thank you.
Any further questions, council? Do we have a motion?
Councilman May indicated...
Sorry, Mr. May, I didn't see you there.
Okay, I just joined. Sorry, I'm late. So, my motion is to reverse the city manager's decision to deny Antonian High School's application for a sign permit, because schools and educational institutions have a greater necessity to have clear signage for fire, police, and emergency service vehicles to locate and provide that service.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Deans. Further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, council. Thank you all, ladies, for being here.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, we're gonna pivot very quickly and go into executive session. Actually, then move forward to item 6.6, Discussion on a Status of a Lawsuit Styled Sylvia Gonzalez Versus City of Castle Hills at All Civil Action Number 520 CV-1151, and Possible Action, Possible Executive Session Pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071, Consultation with Attorneys. So, we will be recessing from a regular session at 6:47 to go into executive session.
...
Yes, sir. And.
But. Yeah.
Dinner time or what?
Um yeah.
That's why I said. For us to. It's. Ten point. Right here. That's what I'm trying to. I did this and I know. Fine. Yeah. It's an approach. Uh. We want to turn to inches. They're connected to them and you don't feel the traffic. You just turn on all that. But they had to go across.
You don't like it all these.
You know. I'll be that. Is that.
Yeah.
Uh when the mountain that was stopping. That's okay. There's a wheel. That's the only thing I agree with.
And. I've got some in here with this. And he had no bill. And then some of the. You know, the water gets something like that. And it just. Speeding there. You know. And I'm. I know. I should. No, no, no. Okay, well.
Well, my. We don't have put my tool in and I need two years later. That's one for the pros, remember that? I had to fix that. And I made like six hundred dollars I did myself. But then as we when I went to the pool, like using the dollar parts. They showed me a picture and says. There's ten thousand dollars. Twenty two was. And I was complaining about six hundred dollars.
Yeah.
But at least.
Well, that's the same. The guy that came like quick down with. I could. And. Lucky.
What he does.
Back watch stuff. That that. You know, that's a big advantage, you know. So you just had to.
We had to heat it those. So I've been in also because we do your next one. So when you put on. Rush. It's even just. I tell.
But we forgot heat it out. Given props to board and heater up there. I see that. Say heater quality expense with heater on piles those cross forming which way.
That is wonderful. Wait. Tell us. And we have. Kids because. Particularly off they don't.
Sure. It's us.
Yeah, but that's the only thing is. Keep your. There's no stretch going. Doesn't lose. That's. Now I think we're such. That. All this. Part of this. Yeah, the biggest. And.
Even if it's water, it's even like when we have our food running. Twenty four hours. That's saving.
Definitely.
Yes. It's kept it running. Got that together. And we just had. Twenty four hours. Whatever. Put something. Quite. But you know, again. Batch.
It's that stuff so it's. Where you know how that that pipe that was going.
Yeah.
So we try it right there in the hood. So I close that. Those hundred right now with the flex hose. Like glue you have glue and then blind it up. We will see if we can take it out and then what with dudes you know. We build by bill.
Yeah, we used to do that. You know. And when getting out. The waters would go through the wooden fence. And still goes to the actually the east.
Perfectly, that's what I think is.
And now it's going straight to the. The right type of thing is that. For the United States. You know, part of the zone. Make sure they're not before the. The ground that's saturated. But when not. The same thing is what's. We had to fly. Okay. Yeah. The weather.
Yeah. So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Hey, I. So. You're whatever. All right. You take care of that. I wish I could have you when I get through doing it. This week. I wish I could have you. You should take a look at what I do. I'm at one one nine.
I think that's.
Yeah. I told you about that. About no. The garbage. Garbage.
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Man, talk about. You don't have all that.
Yeah, that's the only thing is if. A lot of. You know, that's.
Okay. Thank you. Oh.
I'll be happy. No, that would be. First thing you mentioned. You gotta find out, you know. And then you do nothing. We got that going. It was not yet to get a. You know. And at that. Flex hose. But you know. Are you also. Well. Yeah.
If that's what they did. Off. Off. Yeah. Yeah. That's why I. It's okay.
So that's just a note to add to that as well. Uh, but in summary, that's, that's, uh, I, I think that that covers the overall. Uh, report and I would like to open this up to any questions you may have, if you've got any particular detail you would like to discuss.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Uh, Mr. Joyce.
Just a quick question, uh, Mr. Morrison, um. You mentioned the idea of gutting the building as being one option that we could take, which is different than what. I, I think it's different than what your cost proposed. Because I think if I'm not mistaken, your cost went by what the comprehensive plan suggestion was, which was yes, this portion was renovated. There's not a lot of walls here, but the police side, I mean, there were some walls moved around, but it wasn't gutted.
No, but I think what you're gonna end up finding out, for one, is we don't know, th- there are load bearing partitions on that side, there has to be. The, the, the floor system is not sufficient to span that hole, so we know that there's gonna be load bearing walls in there. Which ones are load bearing or not, I don't really know for sure, but i- if you're reconfiguring the rooms, you're likely to affect that. So you're going to, if you're trying to maintain the second floor framing, for instance, you're gonna have to shore up, you're gonna have to do these. So there's costs associated with doing, uh, with doing that, but it's more efficient than, um, it, it's more efficient, I think, to, to, to take it all out and reconstruct it than it is to piecemeal it and say, try to save this piece, try to save that piece. Uh, in, in the end, you just, it's, it, it doesn't generally save you as much as you think it will, it's just trying to save. Or we can save this twenty feet of wall or that twenty feet of wall and it compa- it makes it more complicated. Uh, and your demolition part of it. And again, you don't know what surprises you're gonna find, whether or not you're gonna be able to keep those things at all afterwards anyway. And so what I mean by gutting it is taking it down to the, down to the studs. And if, and if it's possible, if an existing wall is where you want it to be and you're down to the studs and you can see everything. Then sure, keep that wall, but, um, but if you're trying too hard to keep stuff that, that isn't of any real value, you'd end up just making the project more complicated.
Okay, thanks. I, I would actually argue in this case anyway, that gutting it and rebuild that whole thing over there. Would be more costly than what we've proposed, but we can, we can kick that around because you gotta build everything back.
True, but I mean, you're gonna be building back most of it anyway, right? Because it's not configured currently the way you want it to be, according to the, to what the, 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 the. And that's based on the plan that was, was given as a, as a preliminary schematic.
Yes, no, I understand.
So.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any further questions, counsel?
Uh, the one question I had, sir, was that structurally the slab, I didn't, was there a scan done? I didn't see anything about that.
I'm sorry, say it again.
Was there a scan done on the slab?
No, no, this was only a visual assessment, so they walked the perimeter of it, inspected what they could see. Looking for things like cracks or obvious, uh, places where a, a slab might have failed. Uh, and didn't observe any, didn't observe any on the inside in the interior fields. I know a lot of it's got cu- carpet covered, uh, covered with carpet and other finished materials. Um, but the telltale signs, uh, that you normally would see with a, a, a failed slab were not there, so the slab is, is in, in reasonably good condition.
Okay, so, it, my hope would be to do a renovation in phases. Uh, we obviously don't have the money for a, a new building right now, but if we had a plan. Uh, then we can start down that plan in pieces instead of, uh, just putting a wall up here or there as they've done on the other side. And as, as you've seen, do you believe that would be, uh, a conceivable path to follow?
You can, I mean, it's technically feasible. Uh, the question really becomes to me is what is your best value for your dollars? How do you, how do you get the most bang for your buck? And if you, if you do this in two phases or two, two separate projects, I wanna, uh, clarify the difference between, you know, doing a two-phase project or two projects. Right, a two-phase project is, is, you're gonna design the whole thing, but you're only going to do a one part at a time. But it's all part of one project. And, uh, whereas two projects is, we're only gonna design this one part, we're gonna, we're gonna bid this one part of it and we're not gonna address this until a future date. Two different, uh, two different scenarios. And there is a, um, there is an impact with that in terms of the, the, the definition of the work area and how much, of a building that entails in that work area and what things are triggered by the code, so. You could theoretically do, if you do this in two projects and you keep like, says, let's say you, you only start with this side of the building. Well, you could do that and you could standard that, that threshold of fifty percent of the, of the area of the building, because this, this side doesn't, doesn't, uh, um, only takes about a third of, of the floor area. Uh, when you include the second floor on the other side, but the other side, if you did that one for sure, or as a separate project, is over the fifty percent. The impact of that is not, uh, whether or not it's, it's under or over is not tremendous in terms of cost, but it does trigger a few things. Um, a- along the way that you may have to address that you otherwise wouldn't. Um, but again, the, and if you do this as two projects, you're talking about two, uh, procurement processes, two bids processes and all of that, so there's costs associated with doing. It's inefficient to, to do that because you have to double the amount of, of time you're doing, spending, doing bidding and so forth. So, um, uh, I, I think, you know, in, in the end, you could do that, that way. Uh, whether or not that's gonna save you money versus building a new building, you might, you might not. Um, so I, 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 you know, my, I believe and my recommendation is, is that, that, you know, a new building, may provide you your best value for your dollars, even though it costs a little bit more. You know, in the estimate overall. You, you know, uh, it, when you, if you renovate this building, you're, you're gonna be taking your program and trying to make it and accommodate it in, in a building footprint. That may not be the best layout, the best use of the space that you could do as if you built it new. You could, you could build the building that you want and not have to compromise anything, trying to fit it into a, a building that is, you know, decades old and, not necessarily configured the way that you would want it to, so. Uh, those are the kinds of things, and that's why I've tried to look at, look at a, a project in terms of its best value, not necessarily its, supposed hard cost.
Got you. Uh, Mr. Joyce.
Mayor, may I opine?
Please.
I think what the guys are trying to tell us is that this is a really expensive building to renovate. With a variety of things that Mr. Morrison has been talking about and maybe we could gut it, maybe we could do it in phases, you know, there may be different ways to do it, but. In my opinion, it's, we really do need to consider a new building as well. Remember their estimate was to renovate this thing, be, according to what the comprehensive plan suggested. Between four and a half and five and a half million. A new building, six to seven million. So, that's not that, that's not that big a difference. And if I may, I'd just like to take a moment to maybe give some context to our discussion here. The immediate need for space really and truly is in administrative section with finance and court. Those guys are like little rats in a warren over there, that's the immediate need. There's a million functional issues with this building, but in, in my opinion, that's, that's the critical one right there. The other thing we need to think about, whether we renovate or build a new building, is the, the debt that we've taken on recently. We got fourteen million bucks in debt. As of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-three. So, you know, a reasonable question is, given these substantial costs, is it, should we take on more debt? Does it make any sense, or no? Should we wait till twenty forty, whatever it is, whenever the debt starts dropping off? Uh, do we, do we wait then? So that's, that's not a particularly attractive option in my opinion. But, um, another thing I think we need to keep in mind, and really and truly, if you look at the comprehensive plan. This particular project, although we've made nice progress on it, it wasn't that high on a priority list. So if it's something that, with the exception of the critical things. If, you know, if the whole thing is something that goes, goes back a few years, it takes a few years, in my opinion, that's okay. But the walkability, the green spaces, the connecting the neighborhoods, the bikeability, all of those things ranked above this particular project. So, this is the same, I'm almost done. I'm gonna suggest that we form a task force or a subcommittee. Which I'd be happy to be on, perhaps Councilwoman Beth, whose expertise is in this area, perhaps some of the folks in Parks and Projects. To develop some options over the course of the next few months, by July and August, considering all of the suggestions that you all have made. The suggestions that Mr. Morrison made, is try to look at all those different things and make some suggestions. I think we should, maybe even bring in our bond consultant as part of the team and ask for his opinion on the possibility, what does it mean to take on more debt? If we took on another six or seven million at five years, ten years, fifteen years, whatever it is down the road, what does that mean? I think we need to retain an architect to help with those interim designs that have been suggested and put some cost to that. I think that's something we should do. But in whatever option we take, we should, I think, make sure we solve that immediate safe, uh, space problem. Take care of finance, take care of the court, fix that, whatever the option is, it's gotta fix that, would be my suggestion. Uh, and I also suggest finally, and I promise this is the end. I think in order to have the full picture of this building, we ought to go through with the MEP study, the Mechanical Electrical Plumbing Study. Which is another eight thousand, if memory serves. Um, cause that way we have the whole picture. Um, so if, if one day we decide we're gonna spend five, six, seven, eight million dollars doing whatever we're gonna do. We have the whole story of this building, and that's a big piece, that MEP piece is, is a big piece. It's not often a third of construction cost for a new building or more is the MEP, so I think we ought to know how old they are. And what is the useful life left in these units that are cooling as here? Why do we have fifty units out behind the building? I, I don't understand that. Why are there so many condensers out there? But anyway, um, first suggestion is that subcommittee or task force and with those other pieces as suggested. The rest make it.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second for conversation? Second by Ms. Daines. Ms. Haley?
If I may, opine. I think we need to make a plan and work it and do it. We're coming up on our seventy-fifth anniversary, we need to be building for the future here. We all agree this building does not serve its function. And whatever we decide, we need to find a way to get it done. And our community deserves it, our citizens deserve to have their government work in a functioning the best way they can. And we can, we can find, if it's a bonding thing, whatever it's gonna take, we need to look at everything, but nothing's gonna get any cheaper. To do these repairs and to do all this, and we can say we wait ten years and it'll cost like, like the streets. Hate to say it, you know, we, how much did extra did the streets cost because we waited? So I'm, I'm for getting all our ducks in a row and doing it the right way, but I'm all for doing it.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Any further comments? Uh, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Uh, one thing I do wanna bring up with the idea of renovating this, the, the space is the impact it might have on our dispatch services. And making sure that we still have those available, especially now that we're, uh, providing dispatch services for Balcony sites as well. Um, I just wanna make sure that we keep that in mind, that we keep that impact to a minimum, cause I know that there, there are things that we need to do over there, like secure restrooms and things like that to protect our dispatchers, but. N- having that not interrupt our service or i- affect our service in any meaningful way is something that we need to make sure of.
Completely agree, Mr. Smith. Mr. May?
Uh, for the, uh, proposer of the task force formation, are there any parameters that you wanna add? For example, task force comprised solely of citizens of, of Castle Hills. Uh, a limit of two council members, uh, a, a requirement that there be a pa- park and recreation representative? I mean, maybe we should talk about that for a minute, because I want as many people as we can involved. But o- for obvious reasons, we don't wanna probably put more than two council members on there.
Thank you, that's a terrific point, uh, Councilman May, thank you. Um, I was hoping for lean and mean. But, um, you know, I, I certainly agree that we ought to have members of the community here. I was thinking of Councilwoman Daines and myself, perhaps one or two members from Parks and Projects, because this is kind of up there, Baileywood. And, uh, you know, others from the community that might be interested. But I, you know, we need to move quickly. In my, what I'm, what I'm hoping to do, well, the reason I said July and August is because probably, we're gonna have some fees to suggest. Of it, whether it's architect fees or the bond guy or whatever it is, if there are fees to get these people involved, I wanna try to make it part of the next year's budget. So that's why I'm trying to aim for July and August, which is three months from now. Um, anyway, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm open to ideas, those are just my thoughts.
Ms. Daines?
Um, so Councilman May, on that same note, yes, I think that we could potentially, I personally believe we could, serve the community by opening up and having town halls and open meetings, and so even if it's a subset and it's lean and mean or lean-ish and, and nice, um, then we just invite people to come and share their ideas and their opinions. And because I am very wary of taking on another six or seven million dollars in debt, that causes my chest to hurt a little bit. Um, but I do want, um, functional space, and I recognize that we don't really have particularly functional space. And I think there's a lot of great things, I'm sitting here drawing pictures of what we could make it look like already, so, um. I, I think we just need as much, we don't necessarily have to have all the people on the task force, we just need to open it up to everyone's opinions.
I, I completely agree. I, I think honestly the biggest issue is gonna be the finance perspective. If we, and I'm saying we as in our bond council, decide that it is financially not possible for us to secure any additional debt. Then we're gonna have our direction dictated already. And so I think that should probably be one of the first conversations that we have to determine if we have the capacity for any kind of debt. And, and that should point us in the right direction. I am in complete agreement with everything you said. Up until the MEP assessment, I, I think looking at the city and having seen, uh, the way that we've, you know, made accommodations as necessary, I think by and large. Mr. Morrison, tell me if I'm wrong, but the MEP systems would probably all need to be completely redone.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, when you start reconfiguring, you're gonna have to rewire everything. The air conditioning system's gonna have to be completely redone to, you know, to fix whatever the new, uh, um, the new configuration is, so. You're by and large going to be replacing plumbing, it's a little bit different, you know, if you can keep the restrooms generally where they are, then, you know, there may be a little bit less work to do there, but certainly electrical and mechanical system are gonna be significantly impacted.
I don't see very many iterations where we are reusing the existing units or stuff like that, so. Out the gate, if we can save eight thousand dollars, I think that I'd rather pay eight thousand dollars to the architect, uh, to be on the team.
Well, I think that's an excellent point, so let me amend my motion if I may, to, uh, to pull out the completion of the MEP report. And also to enhance the task force with members of the community and presentation or presentations to the community as needed.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Daines, are you acceptable? Perfect. Do we have any other, Ms. Haley?
So how's that invitation gonna go to the community to, I mean, this is a, is that come from the, from the office, from the city office? From the city manager? To invite the people to participate, I mean. That's a, that's a weeds question, we can.
Mr. Rappley, I, I see you. The wheel's turning over there.
I, I would probably get with Mr. Joyce and Ms. Daines and discuss what that process may look like. I mean, I'm happy to assist by soliciting, um, interested residents from the community to participate and give feedback, um, but it's just figuring out what that process looks like. From that standpoint.
Perfect.
I'm just waiting to get the building redone, that's. Yeah, I would have moved walls already, so.
Uh, we have a motion on the table, we have a second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Thank you all so much for being here with us.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have a discussion of possible action on the award of a bid for the Glen Tower Street Improvement Project, Mr. Rappley.
Mayor, counsel, uh, this is a street reconstruction for Glen Tower. Um, we separately bid this street. Um, originally, we were going to bid it with, um, Carrollwood and North Manton. However, we're still working with SAWs on, um, utilities and, uh, there's some drainage components to those streets, so. Uh, in order for the residents on Glen Tower to not wait for their street reconstruction. We decided to bid this separately and we got six bids, uh, one very good bid. Um, we got, uh, RL Jones is the lowest bid, um, you'll see in your packet there. Uh, and then a word letter, uh, recommending RL Jones based on the lowest bid from Ardura. Uh, Mr. Sanford's here, if you have any particular technical questions about the bid process and or construction. I know it was estimated about eight hundred and ten thousand, I believe, and the bids came in about seven twenty-nine, seven thirty. So, uh, far under bid. Um, and interesting enough, since RL Jones just wrapped up the other streets, they can sort of move pretty quickly on, uh, addressing Glen Tower here sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel? Anybody wanna get Glen Tower done? Mr. Joyce?
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that we direct the city manager to enter into a contract with RL Jones to fix Glen Tower at the contract amount of seven hundred twenty-nine, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Second by Ms. Haley. Mr. Rappley, the only ask I have is that we have a construction sign out there, which I think the RL Jones team can get done, right?
Yeah, it's not a problem, we'll take care of it. Or they will.
Perfect. Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Joyce, the second by Ms. Haley, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Ms. Ms. Martin, we have your street coming here soon. Okay, next we have a, uh, discussion of possible action on a contract with Bain Medina Bain for design and construction services for the drainage improvements for Mimosa to West Avenue project, Mr. Rappley.
Uh, Mayor and counsel, this is the Mimosa-Camaria Drainage Project. Um, if you recall, this project, um, was sort of initiated a few years ago. As far as the need to improvements of the channel from Mimosa down to West Avenue. Um, RPS, which was our former engineers, had started, um, the design on it and they got to about sixty percent. But the project was essentially idle until we were able to identify the construction dollars related to this project. Um, this project was a part of the drainage, out of the three million dollars, it was, uh, uh, selected for the project for construction about one point five million. However, we need to finish this drainage design, um, at one hundred percent in order to move forward to even look at bidding this project out, uh, from that standpoint, so. Um, Bain Medina Bain is one of our new engineers, and so this has been, project's sort of been delayed because we didn't have funding and we selected new engineers. But, um, I've had a number of meetings with Bain Medina Bain, uh, Mr. Joyce. Uh, Ms. Daines joined us, I, I believe, on one of those meetings to talk about what this final design to one hundred percent looks like through this creek. What the intent is, and so, um, I was able to work with them on, on a price for the design to finish this out at a hundred percent. Uh, they've also have, um, a design price, I think about twenty-five thousand to visit the trail potential through there, um, as part of the comp plan priority from that standpoint. Uh, I think, Mr. Joyce, I've covered everything, uh, in that, uh, from that standpoint, if you have any comments, or?
No, I'd just like to compliment you on your negotiating skills, he, Mr. Rappley. Reduced the contract amount by quite a lot, six figures, actually. So we have a lot to be grateful for, thank you.
Well, uh, we, we did spend some dollars on it with another engineering firm and, um, we need to move forward and, and like I said. Um, I think they have down, you know, somewhat about six months to finish the design. Um, I'm gonna meet with them to talk about, um, trying to, uh, sort of expedite that area, but they need to look at it comprehensively. Uh, I know that some of the review of floodplain has changed over those few years, since it was at sixty percent. So they need a review from a survey standpoint, um, there's new data they gotta look at as well from a stormwater standpoint. Uh, and flooding impact, and so, um, you know, all intents purposes, try to have this done in the next five, six months, so we can figure out what in all portion we'll be bidding out based on probably a, a, an updated cost. Which has probably changed over the last few years anyways. We're also working with SAWs on this because there's sewer lines there in the easement, so we'll be working with the property owners as well, uh, to try to get this done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. We have a motion? Ms. Ms. Haley?
I move that we approve the contract with Bain Medina Bain for design and construction services for the drainage improvements for Mimosa to West Avenue project.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Second by Mr. Joyce.
I'll second, but a quick question to include the, uh, trail, the additional twenty-five thousand dollars for the trail, is that your motion to, Ms. Haley?
To include the extra twenty-five thousand dollars for the trail.
Thank you, I'll second.
Money well spent, Mr. Joyce. And, and, Mr. Rappley, you know, I, I do wanna, um, thank Mr. Joyce for that, that thought. I think it's really important that if we're gonna spend the money, that we can spend a little bit more to incorporate a quality of life component and soften the look. I think we've seen the city of San Antonio coming back recently and investing in the trails and drainage systems to include trails. I think it's a great idea. Ms. Ms. Daines?
Um, so I'm looking at the project limits section of this and, um, obviously, for those of you who are aware, uh, the, this is not the limit of that drainage area. The drainage area runs all the way to Northwest Military and then under, so will the trail, I assume, be contiguous all the way to Northwest Military, or is it just?
I think the trail is limited to the construction.
Just to this construction, okay.
You know, um, the area upstream of that, uh, could benefit from it, some improvement, but I don't know that that needs it as bad as this area that's been identified.
So potentially, not within this project, but potentially the trail could be an improvement outside of the scope of this work.
Potentially. Mr. Rappley, the other thing I was gonna mention is that this may be a good, uh, opportunity for us to engage with our partners at the, uh, River Authority to offset some additional costs as they've proposed for the Carrollwood project.
Yes, we will more than likely have an interlocal agreement with the River Authority next month to approve, to assist us on any and all projects moving forward.
And, and counsel, just for, um, clarity, uh, the San Antonio River Authority had met with us and they are interested in partnering and helping with all things water as it relates to drainage, so potentially, um, quality assurance, which is a cost that we had historically paid. So if they can help us, then that would ease the burden, financially speaking. Uh, we have a motion.
I think Mr. Fletcher mentioned that we include the dollar amount total, because it's one six, one hundred and sixty thousand for the design. And then twenty-five thousand for the design on the trail, which would be a total of a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Ms. Haley, are you?
Yes, a hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Thank you, Ms. Haley, Mr. Joyce?
I second, uh, the same.
Oh, perfect. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you, counsel. Okay, next up, we have discussion of possible action on a contract with Creative Civilization for the development of a branding slash communication plan for the city of Castle Hills, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, mayor, um. As you all know, we've been thinking about a branding plan for, for many, many years here in good old Castle Hills. Um, the comprehensive plan rated branding as the number two highest priority. It's also a priority for the economic development plan, now underway, of course, for, for businesses. To me, and you all may agree or disagree, but to me, the key issues are the need for identity. Reflecting the new aspirational mood of the city. Positive image to attract residents and businesses and better communication with all. Uh, I believe that this proposal from Creative Civilization addresses these issues and more. They've been a successful business in the area for a long time, and actually they have office in Castle Hills for a long time as well. I did speak to former Councilman Joe Isbrand and that this is his business, and he had just good things to say. and he had just good things to say about Creative Civilization. So I was heartened by that. Uh, Mr. Rappley, using his, his talent, has negotiated a, a very good fee, considerably less than what the original was. Um, so I move that we direct Mr. Rappley to enter into a contract with Creative Civilization for their proposal, which is dated the third of April of this year for a branding and communications plan for Castle Hills at a cost of thirty-four thousand five hundred dollars to be taken from either the seed or ARPER funds.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Daines, conversation, discussion?
This is great news that we can do some more world-class things. We're a world-class city and it's timely. We, we really show that we are. So thank you for that.
Mr. Smith?
Uh, I just want to say that with the possibility of having to renovate City Hall or build a new City Hall, economic development is key to making that possible by increasing our tax revenue, uh, sales tax revenue and perhaps lessening the burden on the, on the property owners in, in here. So I wholeheartedly approve of this.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Rappley, do we have a timeline for how long this would take? And the second question that somebody asked me was, um, was this open to bid? And if we, if that was, do we have other participants?
Uh, no, I mean, we didn't open it up. I mean, I, I think obviously because of the, the dollar amount being below, um, the fifty thousand. Um, and it shows about a five month, uh, from, I believe, May to October to finish this up. That was part of the discussion was, um, modification of price and adjustment of timeline to finish this plan.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Any further questions? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, counsel. Okay, lastly, discussion of possible action from the city manager related to the comprehensive plan priorities. Mr. Joyce?
Well, I think we've addressed, uh, one of the big ones here tonight with the branding. Thank you all for your support for that. Um, we've made good progress over in economic development, the top priority. As you all may recall, we had some town halls back in March and so we're evaluating that right now and coming up with our, our plan and process. We're looking forward to our next meeting Friday at eight-thirty in the, in the, uh, commu- uh, community room. So you all are most welcome to stop in if you like. And then the, the third priority is green space. And sure enough, uh, thank you all for including that trail in the next phase of the drainage down there from, from area Mimosa to West Avenue. So with the, with the big ones, uh, we've had very nice progress. And then of course, all of those, those little ones, Mr. Rappley has his notes there telling you where he's at with them. The only one that I wish we could really kind of get some activity on is, uh, item three A, which is one of the priorities with urgency, the, uh, the security in the Jackson Keller area after the incident there a couple of months back. I was hoping we could put a little task force or something, some security task force to try to make some suggestions to, uh, to make sure that that doesn't happen again. But anyway, I, you know, it's, uh, he, Mr. Rappley has, you know, kept you all up to date and read as to where everything stands. So, Mr. Rappley, have I covered it reasonably well?
I think so, sir. You know, the, um, under the tactical priorities, under, uh, C, we will have a recommendation from our engineers on the speed study in next month. Uh, next month, we'll be visited by VIA on a proposed telecom tax ordinance. We'll be here to discuss that with you. Just in general, uh, the Parks and Projects is working on finalizing, um, what would be the pavilions to be brought forward for council's consideration in May. Uh, and then we're wrapping up the design for the stage for the commons. And then, um, as we mentioned, under B for priorities already underway, we've just approved the contract so we can finish some Mimosa-Cremaria project. And then the last thing I had, obviously, in improving the priority two with branding tonight, um, we'll address that as well. So with these priorities, I'm going to get with Mr. Joyce. Um, I'm hoping to, uh, discuss a plan with him about addressing these individually with certain council members to sort of divide and conquer this and then as well as staff. Um, so we can start tackling more of these priorities as we move forward this year.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Counsel? Okay. Uh, we will proceed to announce this by mayor and city council members on items of community interest. Mr. Smith?
Well, one of the great things about being placed, one is I get to steal everybody's thunder. So I'd like to invite everybody to Fiesta Castle Hills on, on the twentieth. The parade begins, I believe, at ten and the actual Fiesta celebration begins at eleven-thirty. And it is, I, I believe it's an official Fiesta event again this year. So looking forward to seeing everybody there.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Haley?
And speaking of that, the work that goes into putting that event on by the Castle Hills Community Organization and the coordination and the moving parts to make all that happen shows again that we have some very talented, interested, capable, passionate people who love this community, who are out doing things to make things happen. And whether it's the community organization or the Castle Hills Women's Club or the Castle Hills Garden Club or the Economic Development Committee or go down the list of all the people, the citizen involvement that we have and what a, what a, uh, great spirit there is in the community and I'm grateful for it.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. Mr. May?
Uh, just a reminder, the National Arbor Day is April twenty-sixth on a Friday. And, uh, I mention this because Arbor Day was fixed because it's one of two seasons that planting trees are most favorable. One is the spring where it's mild and then again in the fall. And we're not, we're not proposing anything. That's not what this commentary is about. But I would just mention the Historical Society is already making plans for twenty-twenty-six and Arbor Day is one of those celebrations. Just a little teaser, uh, we will hold the next Historical Society meeting in early May. And one of the discussions is to pinpoint that those types of celebrations and the refurbishment through planting of trees is one of those.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Joyce?
Just to reiterate, our next Economic Development Committee meeting is eight-thirty Friday in the Commons. Y'all there, I'm sorry, in the community room, y'all are most welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Ms. Daines?
Um, yeah, I just, uh, come out to Fiesta. We're going to have a amazing, wonderful day. It, uh, tons of work has already been put into it. If you want to volunteer, there's lots of places for you to help out.
What, what about your consent agenda item?
Oh, and then, that's right. The consent agenda was passed at the beginning of this meeting that on May fourth, we are going to have a, um, community-wide garage sale and all of the permit fees will be waived that day. So if you want to do some clearing out of your house and get rid of some items and maybe make a few extra bucks, plan it for May fourth.
Thank you, Ms. Daines. So many of y'all know that we were in Supreme Court, uh, about three weeks ago. And while this continues to be a little bit of an albatross around our neck, I, I'm glad to show through this council meeting that the city of Castle Hills has continued to move forward and we're getting things done with streets, with drainage, with economic development, with community building. And, uh, aside from us having to deal with this legally, I believe that the city of Castle Hills is doing a great job. And thank you to every one of the Castle Hills team members that makes that possible. Uh, Mr. Rappley?
Uh, Mayor and counsel, just want to thank Mr. Harada and his crew. And he's been down in the channel for the last, uh, five, six days clearing that out. So, um, he had a plan. He's moving forward with it. And, um, hopefully we don't have to do this for another five years at least or so, so.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Rappley. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. May, I see you ch- uh, chomping at the bit.
I, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. May. Do we have a second by Ms. Daines? All in favor?